Just so everyone knows, there's some additional seating here to my right. If it's a little crowded back there, we have some additional seats, a few over to my right. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Semantik and I'm the Deputy General Counsel for Metropolitan Transportation Authority, the MTA. I've been designated as the Hearing Officer for this public hearing. Joining us for tonight's hearing are other staff members of the MTA, many of whom you've met prior to the start of the hearing. And we have staff members from MTA, the MTA Capital Construction Company, MTA New York City Transit. Seated with me, to my far left, is Helene Sinkway, who's MTA's Associate Director of Real Estate. To my immediate left is William Goodrich, who's the Program Executive for the Second Avenue Subway Project with MTA Capital Construction Company. And to my right is Douglas Sussman, who's MTA's Director of Community Affairs. Everyone who wishes to speak at tonight's hearing should sign the registration form in the back of the room. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak but has not yet registered, you may do so up until 7:00 PM. Please note that the emergency exits for this room are located to my right and straight back at the entrance, and to my left in the back of the room. This is a public hearing under Article II of the Eminent Domain Procedure Law. The topic of tonight's hearing is MTA's proposed acquisition of a fee interest, various permanent and temporary easements, and the termination of rights for certain sidewalk encroachments in properties in the borough of Manhattan that will be required in connection with contract packages 3, 4, and 5 of Phase 1 of the Second Avenue Subway Project. Those contract packages consist of multiple contracts and relate to work associated with the Second Avenue Subway stations at 63rd Street, 72nd Street, and 86th Street respectively. For convenience, I will refer to each contract package simply as Contract 3, Contract 4, and Contract 5. The hearing will review the project's public uses, benefits, purposes, and location of property interests required for these contracts, the impact of work associated with these contracts on the environment and residents of the area, and will give the public an opportunity to comment or submit written comments on the topics covered by this hearing. Just want to go off-script for a moment and let you know that the Eminent Domain Procedure Law requires me to cover a number of topics tonight. The hearing will take some time to complete, so I ask for your patience, and we will cover all the items required by law and give as much detail as we can about the impacts and the specific nature of the property acquisitions. Under the United States and New York constitutions, the government has the right to acquire private property for public use, provided that just compensation is paid for the property that it acquires. That power is called eminent domain or condemnation. MTA is a New York public authority that was created by the state legislature and has been granted the right to acquire property by condemnation for transportation projects like the Second Avenue Subway Project. The fact that we are holding a public hearing under the Eminent Domain Procedure Law tonight does not automatically mean that MTA will condemn all property interests needed for this stage of the project. MTA hopes to acquire as many property interests as it can through negotiated agreements with property owners. However, MTA may not be able to reach agreements with some property owners and will be compelled to acquire those property interests by condemnation. New York law provides many rights and protections for owners whose property interests are acquired by condemnation, including the right to receive and file claims for just compensation. In each instance where an agreement is not reached with a property owner, MTA will provide additional notices and information to the owner prior to starting a formal legal proceeding to condemn the required property interest. I call your attention to a handout that is available to everyone in attendance tonight, which is a copy of the Public Hearing Notice that lists the properties that will be covered in tonight's hearing and the property interests that MTA will require at each location. Those hearing notices were available and continue to be available at the sign-in table if you would like one. In addition, for anyone who's interested in reviewing it, MTA and the Federal Transit Administration, also known as the FTA, issued a Final Environmental Impact Statement, or FEIS, for the Second Avenue Subway Project in April 2004. It also issued a supplemental environmental assessment to the Second Avenue Subway Final Environmental Impact Statement for the 72nd and 86th Street Station Entrance Alternatives in June 2009. Copies of the FEIS and the environmental assessment for the 72nd Street and 86th Street Station entrances are available at the end of this table. They're here for public inspection and review. And the documents and other information about the Second Avenue Subway Project, including construction updates, are also available on MTA's website at www.mta.info/constr/sas. I know that's a big mouthful, but we also have that website location indicated at the bottom of the Public Hearing Notice. If anybody needs access to hard copies of those documents after tonight's meeting, please give me a call. My name and contact information is the bottom of the Public Hearing Notice, and I'd be glad to accommodate you. As required under the Eminent Domain Procedure Law, this hearing will inform the public about the Second Avenue Subway Project, especially the work and property requirements for contracts 3, 4, and 5 of Phase 1 of the project. We'll also review the public use benefit and purpose to be served by this work and the proposed property acquisitions, and describe the general impact of this part of the project on the environment and surrounding neighborhoods. MTA published notices of this public hearing in the New York Post from March 29, 2010, and including April 2, 2010, and in the Amsterdam News and in El Diario on April 1, 2010. MTA also mailed notices of this hearing to affected property owners, including easement holders, mortgagees, and commercial tenants who are directly affected. The hearing notices to property owners and tenants also contain a reduced map or plan describing the property interests to be acquired or encroachments to be terminated at each address-ese location. This hearing is being recorded. A transcript of the recording will be made. For those of you who will be reading from a written statement, I request that you provide us with a copy of the statement if you have one. The ground rules for the hearing are as follows. First, I will make my presentation. Then, we will call each person who has registered to speak. Again, those registration forms are in the entrance on the outside of the building of this room, by the elevator, the outside of this room. We also will accept any written statements today, and we'll keep the record of this hearing open until 5:30 PM on April 30, 2010, for the purpose of receiving additional written comments. The format of this hearing, as well as time constraints, don't permit me or other project representatives to answer questions raised by public speakers. However, representatives from the MTA, MTA Capital Construction, New York City Transit, and our contractors were available about an hour before the hearing tonight to answer questions raised by property owners and interested parties. If time permits, we'll be available after the hearing tonight, and upon request, we'll provide names and telephone numbers, contact information of key project personnel, so that you can follow up with us, and we can address any questions you may have about the project and the property acquisitions. I'd like to spend a few moments to generally describe the project as a whole and remind everyone that this hearing relates only to property acquisition needs for contract packages 3, 4, and 5 of Phase 1 of the project. When constructed, when fully constructed, the Second Avenue Subway envisions a new two-track, approximately 8.5-mile rail line with 16 new stations extending the length of Manhattan's East Side corridor from a terminal station at 125th Street and Lexington Avenue in Harlem to Hanover Square in Lower Manhattan. The new line will make the neighborhoods of the East Side more accessible, not only to those who live there, but to visitors and workers traveling from other parts of New York City as well. Not only will the Second Avenue Subway serve existing neighborhoods on the densely developed East Side of Manhattan, it also will serve emerging growth in several areas, including East Harlem, Lower East Side, and Chinatown. The Second Avenue Subway actually will provide for two subway services in the East Side corridor. The first will be a full-length Second Avenue route operating between 125th Street and Hanover Square with 16 new stations serving this area. The second service will operate along Second Avenue from 125th Street to 63rd Street, where it will divert west along the existing 63rd Street Line and stop at the existing F-line station at Lexington Avenue and East 63rd Street. It would then join the existing Broadway Line via an existing tunnel connection and serve the express stations along 7th Avenue and Broadway before crossing the Manhattan Bridge to Brooklyn. Passengers traveling to Lower Manhattan on this route could transfer for local service to destinations south of Canal Street. The Second Avenue Subway has been designed to follow the public right-of-way within city streets to minimize the need to acquire private property for the project. However, some public and private property acquisitions along the project route are needed to construct and operate the subway. There are four construction phases to the full Second Avenue Subway. Phase 1, which we're in construction with right now, consists of various contracts covering construction of the subway line under Second Avenue from East 125th Street to East 63rd Street. Phase 1 will include three stations, three new stations at 96th Street, 86th, and 72nd Streets, an additional build-out and refurbishing of the existing F-line station at 63rd Street, new tunnels under Second Avenue between 96th and 63rd Street stations, and track storage in an existing tunnel that extends to 125th Street. At each station, ancillary facilities also will be constructed. These support facilities generally contain ventilation, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing equipment to serve subway operations. When completed, passenger service for Phase 1 will operate from the 96th Street Station to the existing 63rd Street Station and continue downtown on the existing Broadway Lines I've Contract 3 is the contract I'll focus on first, and it consists of work associated with the 63rd Street Station at the intersection of 3rd Avenue and 63rd Street. This is an existing station that was built in 1970s and 80s that currently supports the F-line subway service. The primary focus of Contract 3 is fitting out the existing station to accommodate both F-line and Second Avenue subway service, reconstructing two existing entrances, constructing two new entrances, refurbishing the northern half of the station, and structurally modifying the existing station. The work in this contract that will require new property acquisitions includes construction of two ancillary facilities and a new entrance for the 63rd Street Station. I'll now describe the additional property acquisitions needed for Contract 3. The specific location of each property interest that MTA is including in tonight's hearing is listed in the Public Hearing Notice that we've made available and in the information previously mailed to each affected owner and interested party. MTA requires permanent and temporary easements for two new ancillary facilities for the 63rd Street Station. For anyone who's not familiar with the term, an easement is simply a right to use part of someone's property for a stated purpose. Easements may be either permanent or temporary in nature. Permanent easements are needed to support and maintain the new subway improvements, while temporary easements generally only needed during construction of those improvements. Both of the properties required for the ancillaries previously were addressed in MTA's Eminent Domain Hearing in September 2007, but some of the easement configurations have been modified to reflect more specific construction information at these locations. The first property acquisition that I'll describe involves permanent and temporary easements in a parking garage located in Block 1397, Lot 61, which is at the street address of 124 East 63rd Street. Those easements are needed to construct, operate, maintain, and periodically inspect the ancillary facility that will be located within and on top of the garage building. The ancillary facility will consist of a utility duct supporting the operation of the cooling towers to be located on the roof, and a vent shaft that will supply fresh air to the station. The utility and vent shafts will connect to the existing station at the front of the property through the basement wall along East 63rd Street. Between the front and back of the property, the utility and vent shafts will be buried beneath the basement slab. The shafts will then reach up through the private structure to the back or southern end of the building roof. The cooling towers will be supported at roof level by an independent structural framing system built through the existing garage structure. The structure will be supported on a pile foundation that extends down to the rock below. The limits of the temporary easements at all levels of the parking garage are based on the location of the ventilation shaft and utility duct and on providing temporary access to the work during construction. The limits of the permanent easements are based on the locations of the ventilation system, the cooling towers, and the independent structural framing system. MTA will endeavor to work with a property owner and garage owner to minimize construction impacts as much as possible and to develop a plan for periodic inspection and maintenance of the ancillary structures in the future. In the property adjacent to and immediately east of the parking garage, a temporary easement is required in airspace above the existing building in Block 1397, Lot 60, located at 128 East 63rd Street. This easement is needed to accommodate the safe movement of construction equipment and cranes during construction of the ancillary facility next door. The air shafts will be temporarily unavailable during the use of the cranes, I'm sorry, the air rights above this building will be temporarily unavailable during the use of the cranes that will be needed to construct the ancillary next door. Please note that from this point of the hearing forward, I'm going to be referring to properties sometimes just by their block and lot number or their address. The cross-references for the properties which contain, in some instances, multiple street addresses, again, are located on the Public Hearing Notice that is available, so if you need additional information of locating the easements, please refer to the Public Hearing Notice. Permanent and temporary easements are required in Block 1398, formerly known as Lot 3, Lot 33, which is condo number 345, to construct, operate, maintain, and periodically inspect a new ancillary facility that will be located in the existing public plaza area at that site. The ancillary structure will be comprised of ventilation shafts located in the southwest corner of the property. The ventilation shafts will provide fresh air to and exhaust air from the station below. The shafts will connect to the existing station through the property's basement wall and extend up through and above the parking garage and public plaza. The ancillary facility containing the vent shafts will be a chimney-like structure constructed within the plaza at street level. The ancillary facility will be supported on a pile foundation that extends down to the rock below. The temporary easement covering the entire public plaza area will be used by MTA's contractors to construct the ancillary facility and as a storage and staging area during construction of the entire 63rd Street Station and associated facilities. The existing public plaza will be replaced with a new plaza whose design is being developed in consultation with a property owner and the New York City Department of Planning. As a contingency measure, a temporary easement is being required for the plaza slab and temporary access rights during construction within the limits of the supermarket on the site located below the plaza. MTA will endeavor to work with the details of this arrangement with the property owner, garage owner, supermarket owner, to minimize disruptions as much as possible. To provide the contractor with access to and from the worksite, an additional temporary easement is required in the garage unit of the condominium for the garage ramp leading to the parking garage beneath the plaza. Turning now to the property acquisition needed for the entrance facility. At the September 2007 Eminent Domain Public Hearing, MTA discussed its need for permanent and temporary easements for a new subway entrance in Block 1417, Lot 45. That's at 200 East 63rd Street. And that building is a six-story apartment building with street-level retail shops located at the southeast corner of 3rd Avenue and East 63rd Street. Permanent and temporary easements are required for new escalators that will run from the street level down through the basement, where the operating equipment also will be located. In addition, the station emergency control room will be located within the entrance at street level. Since the September 2007 public hearing, MTA has revised, has refined its plans by moving the pedestrian elevator originally proposed at this location to a sidewalk bump-out near the northwest corner of 3rd Avenue and East 63rd Street, thereby lessening the permanent easement area needed at 200 East 63rd Street. There remains a need for temporary easements at the street and basement levels for the purpose of relocating existing utilities in the building into other space in the building to prepare the existing structure and building systems for the subsequent construction of the station entrance and for periodic utility inspections in all areas of the building. Although MTA's original plan was to have the building owner perform this work at MTA's expense, MTA has developed an alternate plan in which MTA's own contractors will perform that work. The temporary easements surround the permanent easements and encompass the remainder of the street and basement levels of the building. There also are common spaces to the building and possibly an office unit at street level that fall within the expanded temporary easement. The temporary easements will require MTA to limit outside access to the basement during the construction phase of the project. Temporary easements will also be required for access rights during construction on all levels of the buildings for any relocation, modification, or restoration of building services and utilities. MTA and its contractors will endeavor to coordinate all utility relocation and structural work and all construction activities in the building with the owner. I'll now talk about Contract 4 Property Acquisition Needs. Contract 4 consists of constructing the 72nd Street Station, station entrances, and ancillary facilities, and completing the tunnels that will connect the 72nd Street Station to the 63rd Street Station. In order to construct, operate, and maintain a new subway entrance at the southeast corner of Second Avenue and East 72nd Street, MTA must acquire the Fee Simple Interest, which means the full real estate interest in the entire lot and building at Block 1446, Lot 51. That's at 300 East 72nd Street. The existing four-story building at this location, with a pizzeria and wireless store on the ground floor and a total of three residential apartments on the upper floors, will be acquired and demolished, and a new subway entrance structure that will house five elevators will be constructed at that location. MTA and the FTA issued a supplemental environmental assessment for this entrance and another at 86th Street in June 2009, which selected this site as a preferred alternative for the station entrance and concluded that this facility would not have any significant environmental impacts. A finding of no significant impact to that effect was issued by FTA in October 2009. In addition to acquiring the Fee Simple Interest for the new station entrance at this location, MTA also will be terminating any building bulk, size, or height restrictions, setback requirements, light and air easements, or any other rights that the two properties immediately adjacent to this property may have that would restrict MTA's construction of the new entrance facility at 300 East 72nd Street. The adjacent properties are identified as Block 1446, former Lot 149, which is condo 950, and also the property in Block 1446, Lot, former Lot 149, which is condo 950, located at 308 to 314 East 72nd Street. There's also, the other property adjacent to 300 East 72nd Street is Block 1446, Lot 151, located at 1390 and 1/2 Second Avenue. In MTA's September 2007 Eminent Domain Hearing, we previously identified certain permanent and temporary easements that may need to be required under those same two properties in connection with MTA's adjacent station and entrance construction. Since the last Eminent Domain Hearing back in September 2007, the subway tunnel design has been modified from a three-track to a two-track alignment. This modification requires a minor realignment of the tunnels and additional permanent and temporary subsurface easements to support tunnel construction between the new 72nd Street Station and the existing 63rd Street Station. To support Contract 1, MTA previously acquired permanent and temporary subsurface easements for tunnel construction in some of the properties listed in tonight's Public Hearing Notice, but we now need additional permanent and temporary easements to construct the tunnels in their slightly modified alignment. Permanent and temporary subsurface easements in Block 1419, formerly known as Lot 20, condo 197, are required to support construction of the redesigned two-track alignment and turnout track in one of the Contract 4 contracts. MTA previously acquired permanent and temporary subsurface easements in this property for tunnel construction under Contract 1. The extent of the permanent easement is being increased to support the two-track alignment and turnout cavern. Permanent and temporary subsurface easements also are needed in Block 1420, formerly known as Lot 1, condo 197, to support construction of the two-track alignment and turnout cavern. Temporary subsurface easements are required in the following properties for temporary support during construction of the two-track alignment and turnout cavern. These are located in Block 1421, Lot 21, Block 1422, Lot 22, Block 1428, Lots 21, 22, and 23, and Block 1422, Lot 1. All the subway track and tunnel easements I've just described, both permanent and temporary, will be located below the lowest reaches of the existing buildings on each site. In the list of temporary subsurface easements required for temporary support during construction, the last block and lot, I'm reminded by my colleague, is Block 1442, Lot 1, as it appears in the Public Hearing Notice. At the last public hearing, we described various permanent and temporary easements that will be required to construct and maintain new subway entrances for the project. Among the easements described at that hearing were permanent and temporary subsurface easements to construct and maintain an underground pedestrian passageway that will connect the new street entrance at the northeast corner of Second Avenue and East 69th Street to the 72nd Street Station. One of those locations is Block 1444, Lot 51, at 1322 Second Avenue, in which MTA previously expressed the need to acquire permanent and temporary subsurface easements and a temporary access easement in the basement of the building to work, for work associated with the 69th Street Station entrance and subsurface passageway. At that building, which is a small five-story residential walk-up building with ground-floor commercial space, MTA also may need to vacate all occupants in the building as a precautionary measure for up to four separate four-hour intervals while the subsurface underpinning of the building is performed. Again, we're listing this as a precautionary measure, and details, and whether this will be required will be worked out in the future when the contractor is on board and further investigations are done. MTA will schedule this work, if needed, to minimize disruptions to everyone who must be temporarily, who must temporarily leave the building during those set times. Another set of permanent and temporary easements needed in connection with a station entrance at the northeast corner of Second Avenue and East 69th Street, and also discussed at the last public hearing, are those located in Block 1444, Lot 1, which is condo number 377, at 301 East 69th Street. In order to construct the station entrance and underground pedestrian passageway at this location, existing building utilities, equipment, and other building services must be relocated out of MTA's easement areas and placed in other space in the street and basement. and basement levels of the affected building. Although MTA's original plan was to have the various condo owners perform this work at MTA's expense, MTA has developed an alternate plan in which MTA's own contractors will perform that work. This will require additional temporary easement space on the street and in the basement areas of the building. MTA and its contractors will endeavor to coordinate all utility relocation and structural work in the building with the affected condo owners and tenants. Turning now to, uh, the Contract Five package, uh, this, uh, contract includes work related to the new 86th Street Station, station entrances, and ancillary facilities. At the last public hearing, we described MTA's need to acquire permanent and temporary easements to support the cut-and-cover excavation and construction of a new entrance for the 86th Street, Street Station within the building located at 1602 Second Avenue at the northeast corner of 83rd Street and Second Avenue, and the interests included a permanent and temporary easement for that purpose in a privately owned plaza at Block 1546, Lot One, at 303 East 83rd Street. At tonight's hearing, we're including an additional interest, which is a permanent easement with approximate dimensions of 24 feet by 10 feet, which is located in a privately owned portion of the public plaza area, immediately in front of the doors leading to an emergency egress stair to the 86th Street Station. The permanent easement is needed for the limited purpose of prohibiting the private owner or its tenants from installing any obstructions in the easement area that would block or impede access to and from the doors to the emergency egress stair. Under all contracts discussed in tonight's hearing, MTA may need to terminate at various locations the rights to use various sidewalk encroachments, including vaults, cellar doors, enclosed sidewalk cafes, canopies, residential awnings that extend outward from the building of more, for more than five feet into the sidewalk, and commercial awnings that extend more than eight feet into the sidewalk. Most of those encroachment terminations were covered in MTA's, uh, September 2007 public hearing, but tonight's hearing covers some additional public sidewalk areas where project-related sidewalk excavation and staging areas may require the termination of additional vaults under the sidewalks and encroachments on or above the sidewalk, uh, areas. Our letters to affected property owners detailed, um, the areas that would be impacted. Just like to mention, as, as I've mentioned to some of you before, uh, tonight's hearing, that, uh, private properties' use of sidewalk vaults and other sidewalk encroachments is subject to the city's right to terminate that, that use on a short notice. So we will be working with the various city agencies who are involved to, um, send termination notices out in advance for those, um, those areas that will, will be impacted by, by sidewalk encroachments. And MTA will include sidewalk vault and other encroachment terminations in the condemnation proceeding only if necessary to confirm, enforce, or augment the city's terminations. The extent to which MTA's construction work will impact vaults and other encroachments is not completely known at each location. The maps that were mailed with the public hearing notice show surface encroachments that are subject to termination, but, again, MTA presently doesn't know where all subsurface vaults are located or the extent to which project construction will impact any of the encroachments, if at all. As in our prior eminent domain public hearings, we've included possible encroachment terminations in the hearing to give MTA the right to terminate by eminent domain if necessary. With respect to Contract Three, MTA may need to terminate additional vaults and sidewalk encroachments at the following locations. Um, and i- in order to save some time, I know, I know that the presentation is running a little long, those areas for Contract, uh, Three, Contract Four, Four B, Contracts Five A and Five B, where these terminations will be, are required, are listed in the public hearing notice, so rather than repeat them all, there, there's, uh, an extensive list, please refer to the public hearing notice, and all of them are listed there. That concludes my summary of the property interests that MTA will need for, uh, Phase One of the Second Avenue subway project. MTA will be available to discuss property acquisition and relocation requirements and timeframes with all affected property owners and tenants, and will communicate updated information on scheduling when it becomes known. The time durations during which MTA's contractors will actually use and occupy the temporary easements I've described will vary from location to location. More definitive timeframes for the temporary easements will be determined after construction contracts are awarded and project-related work is scheduled. But in order to give its contractors the maximum flexibility in scheduling work in the temporary easement area, MTA intends to vest title to all temporary easements for a seven-year or 84-month time period, starting from when MTA acquires those easements, which we anticipate will happen as early as October of this year, and extending through the anticipated completion date for Phase One of the Second Avenue subway project in 2017. So that's, that's a, that's a seven-year, uh, window period during which those temporary easements may be, uh, may actually be needed. We will use our best efforts to stage work in the temporary easement areas to minimize impacts to property owners and tenants, and to terminate each temporary easement as soon as possible after project-related uses are completed. If MTA discontinues its use of any temporary easement before the easement's full duration, we will terminate the easement through an easement termination notice that will file with the county clerk's office and serve on each affected property owner. Although subject to, to change, MTA anticipates that under the current project schedule that we'll complete acquisition of the property interests and terminate the rights for the sidewalk encroachments for Contracts Three, Four, and Five as early as October of 2010, and, um, in the interim, we will reach out to property owners, will, uh, will be making offers of just compensation where we have not already done so, um, will be available to negotiate agreements if, if possible, and also to answer any questions by owners and tenants about project schedules and construction impacts. As required by the eminent domain procedure law, I'm just going to briefly discuss the public uses, benefits, and purposes of the project. They were extensively discussed in the environmental impact statement for the project, in, uh, in, in various community outreach, uh, sessions, and so, uh, I'll just explain them in a nutshell. Second Avenue subway will provide more flexibility for passengers traveling along the eastern side of Manhattan where subway service is currently limited to one line, the severely overcrowded Lexington Avenue line for much of the area. The new Second Avenue service thus will provide a needed alternative to the Lexington Avenue line in the event of shutdowns to that service due to emergencies or breakdowns. With respect to the Contracts Three, Four, and Five packages, the work consists of critical elements for the overall project, as it involves the construction of two of the three new stations in, in Phase One, together with entrances and ancillary facilities for those stations, as well as the construction of new entrances and ancillary facilities for the existing 63rd Street Station. MTA will provide, um, relocation assistance and financial benefits to all eligible commercial and residential occupants who are displaced by this project in accordance with the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisitions Policies Act and applicable federal relocation regulations. These regulations ensure that commercial and residential occupants who are displaced by a federally funded project are treated fairly and consistently. MTA has retained the services of a relocation consultant, O.R. Colon Associates, who together with its subconsultants will provide information on available relocation assistance, services, and benefits, and assist displaced residents and businesses in locating suitable replacement dwellings and, uh, suitable commercial space, moving to their new locations, and completing the paperwork needed to receive all available financial assistance in connection with their relocation. O.R. Colon has significant experience in providing relocation assistance on major projects throughout the United States, in the New York metropolitan area, and have already successfully relocated most of the residential tenants and a number of the commercial tenants who have been displaced by this project. O.R. Colon has set up a field office at 253 East 72nd Street next to Falk Drugs at the northeast corner of Second Avenue and East 72nd Street, and is available to inform all displaced residents and businesses of their rights and benefits under the Uniform Act, to gather all information about their relocation needs and prefer, preferences. And, um, at tonight's hearing, I'll briefly summarize the types of relocation assistance that will be provided. For eligible residential occupants displaced in their apartments or dwellings, MTA's relocation consultants will provide relocation advisory services, including referrals to comparable and suitable replacement dwellings. Uh, they'll inspect the replacement housing to ensure it meets all applicable standards. They'll, uh, provide help in preparing claim forms for relocation payments and other assistance to minimize the impacts of the move. Displaced residents will receive payment for moving expenses and replacement housing financial assistance, which may take the form of either a rent subsidy or a financial assistance to purchase a replacement apartment or home. There are a lot of details about this project, so, uh, you know, we would just encourage anyone who's affected to, to please, uh, uh, make an appointment with O.R. Colon, will provide contact information if they haven't already reached out and, um, made contact with you. Eligible businesses displaced by the project will also receive through O.R. Colon, uh, relocation advisory services, including referrals to replacement locations, also help in preparing claim forms for relocation payments, uh, and other assistance, uh, and compensation that will minimize the impact of the move. Some of the property acquisitions covered in tonight's hearing will require permanent or temporary displacement of commercial or residential occupants in these locations or it follows. The station entrance at 200 East 63rd Street will require permanent and temporary easements in the ground floor and basement that will permanently displace the tenant in the space currently leased by a women's clothing store, and possibly the temporary displacement of one or more ATMs in the adjacent bank lobby. MTA requires temporary easements in the, in the entire building, as I've mentioned, including the upper floor residential space for periodic inspections and possible utility relocations, but those activities are not expected to displace any residents, either permanently or temporarily. The ancillary facility in the parking garage at 124 East 63rd Street will result in some permanent and temporary displacement of parking and office space within the garage, and could result in temporary closures of all or part of the garage operations while work is underway in the easement areas. While parking spaces and activities may be temporarily suspended during the construction phase, permanent, uh, relocation of the business is not anticipated. Uh, again, we will work very closely with the, the garage operator and owner to minimize impacts as much as we can. The privately owned public plaza at the northwest corner of East 63rd Street and Third Avenue will be closed to the public and used as a staging area during construction of the ancillary facility in the plaza and the new subway entrance located in the adjacent sidewalk on the north side of East 63rd Street. The ancillary structure will, uh, permanently displace a portion of the public plaza that is privately owned in a corner of a garage structure. This subsurface temporary easements for the ancillary facility will impact the subsurface garage ramp and private supermarket spaces during construction, but are not anticipated to result in any permanent or temporary displacement of those uses. The new subway facility, uh, the entrance facility at 300 East 72nd Street will require MTA to demolish the existing four-story building, and therefore, uh, it will require, before that time, the permanent relocation of two ground floor commercial spaces currently occupied by a pizzeria and a wireless store and all resident, all residential occupants in the three apartments upstairs. At 301 East 69th Street, the permanent and temporary easements required in connection with the new subway entrance at the northeast corner of Second Avenue and East 69th Street will require the permanent displacement of a pizzeria and an off-track bedding facility, and the temporary displacement of some parking garage space. In addition, the residential condominium at that location will lose some common area in the basement. Although MTA will need periodic access to all areas of the building during construction for inspections and possible utility work, there will be no permanent impact on the residential apartments in the condominium. As I previously stated, in connection with the underpinning activities at 1322 Second Avenue to support the underground pedestrian passageway and the new subway entrance at the northeast corner of Second Avenue and 69th Street, will need to, um, vacate possibly, um, on a temporary basis, all commercial and residential occupants in that building, uh, for up to four separate four-hour intervals, um, while the subsurface underpinning of the building is performed. MTA will schedule this work, if needed, to minimize disruptions to everyone who must temporarily leave the building during those times. The termination of various sidewalk encroachments, including vaults, cellar doors, and canopies, will impact various businesses and residential uses, but are not anticipated to require any business or residents to be displaced. Again, as, uh, the eminent domain, uh, procedure law requires me to do, I'd like to briefly describe the environmental, uh, impacts, um, for the project. The Second Avenue subway's, uh, environmental review process started in 1995 and culminated in a final environmental impact statement in April 2004 that recommended the Second Avenue subway project as the alternative that best satisfied the goals and objectives of that lengthy process. On July 8th, 2004, FTA issued a record of decision for the project, and the record of decision is the last step of the federal environmental review process under the National Environmental Policy Act signifies that the project is eligible for federal funding and, and support. A complete description of the environmental impacts for the entire project is in the FEIS and was covered in MTA's, uh, prior public hearings. Again, the FEIS is available here at the table and on MTA's website, uh, as well as the environmental assessment for the 72nd and 86th Street entrances. It should also be noted that, uh, after the FEIS was completed in 2004, MTA has monitored and evaluated potential impacts from the project as the design for the project has progressed, and where appropriate, has shared these analyses with the FTA for review and concurrence. It's just an ongoing process that, uh, takes place in a project of this size. None of the project's design refinements have to date been determined to create a potential for any new significant environmental impacts beyond those already addressed in the FEIS. Construction activities will result in unavoidable increases in traffic, truck movement, dust, noise, and vibration in and around Contracts Three, Four, and Five construction areas. Roadways and sidewalks will need to be narrowed to facilitate, facilitate construction, and trucks making deliveries and removing earth and other materials will need to travel to and from each of the construction areas. Certain construction activities could require restricting access to buildings for several hours. In most cases, access to buildings, including street-level businesses, will be maintained throughout the construction period, although pedestrian and vehicular access will be altered or restricted by the construction of sidewalk sheds and the removal of parking and travel lanes, and the visibility of some businesses will be reduced. To help minimize potential impacts, MTA will make every reasonable effort to maintain access, control dust, noise, and vibration, screen construction activities, control rodents and pests, and minimize other disruptions wherever practicable. As far as the transportation impacts are concerned, up to half the width of Second Avenue roadway will be closed at the construction work zones for the 86th Street Station between, approximately between 83rd Street and 88 Streets. The 72nd Street Station work zone, approximately between 69th and 74 Streets. A minimum of four lanes will be maintained on Second Avenue for vehicular traffic adjacent to work zones by prohibiting, uh, curbside parking, pickups, drop-offs, and deliveries, relocating bus stops, and narrowing sidewalks to a minimum of seven feet. A minimum of four lanes will be maintained on 72nd and 86th Street, and a minimum of one lane will be maintained on one-way side streets. For the construction of new entrances and ancillary facilities for the 63rd Street Station, Third Avenue and 63rd Street, uh, will need to be narrowed. A minimum of four lanes will be maintained on Third Avenue, and a minimum of one lane will be maintained on 63rd Street. In addition to reducing roadway In addition to reducing roadway capacity, construction activity will increase volumes on east-side streets affected by deliveries to and from construction zones by fifteen to fifty trucks per peak period hour, depending upon the location, on the construction phasing, sequence, and methods. In addition, construction will generate a significant volume of truck traffic through the east side of Manhattan for spoils removal from and materials delivery to the construction sites. MTA has developed an interagency traffic management task force to implement and monitor traffic mitigation for the project. The traffic mitigation will be refined as needed to accommodate traveler and community needs while maintaining the safe and efficient construction of the subway in as timely manner as possible. Businesses could be adversely affected by the disruptions associated with construction activities, such as reduced pedestrian and vehicular access, removal of parking, and the reduction in the visibility of some businesses, particularly retail establishments with outdoor activities on the sidewalk, which may have to be removed when construction is occurring nearby. Although temporary, these disruptions could affect the business's revenue streams and could make the areas in the vicinity of construction activities less desirable locations while construction is underway. To help mitigate these impacts, MTA will promote high-quality design of sidewalk sheds, such as the addition of better visibility, better lighting, and good store signage around construction sites. We'll coordinate with businesses in each phase to address access and delivery issues to provide special loading and unloading areas on nearby side streets to locations where access will be curtailed in front of buildings during construction. In those designated side street areas, parking may be prohibited to allow more reliable deliveries and pickups. MTA is employing, will continue to employ, community outreach throughout construction to keep the affected neighborhoods informed about construction activities taking place. We'll also use the outreach program to work closely with businesses, organizations, community groups, schools, houses of worship, and other organizations to share information about project construction activities. We'll do that directly through our community representatives, and also provide community and construction updates to Community Board Eight and on our website. The FEIS concluded that the project's construction activities, including truck trips, congestion, and diversions to existing traffic, will not result in significant adverse impacts to air qualities. MTA's contractors will be required to follow measures to reduce construction-related air pollution to the maximum extent practicable. These measures include dust covers for trucks, spray misting exposed areas, using safe chemical dust suppressants to treat and control spoils at construction areas. In addition, a fence of an appropriate height will surround the construction sites to reduce windborne dust. To reduce emissions from construction equipment, diesel emission controls for non-road equipment will be required. These controls require that all heavy-duty equipment use ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel and diesel particulate filters or other retrofit technology in accordance with MTA policies. In addition, idling time for all diesel equipment will be limited to three consecutive minutes, except in certain limited circumstances. Mining operations in Rock will use drilling and controlled blasting, and except for some limited locations where vertical blasting may occur, most of the noise will be contained underground and is not expected to be disruptive. Vertical blasting is blasting that must be performed to create vertical access or ventilation shafts to the street. At locations where vertical blasting will occur, noise from the blasting will be discernible to nearby residents and businesses for a short period of time, but will be limited to the hours of seven AM to ten PM. In general, due to the short duration of these events, average hourly noise levels will not be significantly affected by the blast noise. Noise also will be generated from ground improvement and truck activity, slurry wall and secant pile construction, spoils removal at stations and from the tunnels and other activities. To reduce noise associated with such construction, performance standards will be established by MTA. They are in place and will be included in contract documents that must be met by all contractors during construction. Prior to construction, ambient noise measurements are taken, will continue to be taken, in noise-sensitive locations. Once construction begins, twenty-four-hour noise monitoring stations also will be established, and these stations will provide MTA with the ability to monitor its contractors to ensure that the performance standards established by MTA are met. Contractors also will be required to develop noise monitoring and reporting protocols to be used during construction to ensure compliance with the performance standards, and will obtain certificates of equipment noise compliance from MTA or its designated for all construction equipment employed throughout the project. Construction will result in varying degrees of ground vibration depending on the stage of construction, the equipment and construction methods employed, and the distance from the construction to buildings in vibration-sensitive structures. Due to the close proximity of sensitive receptors, vibration levels during a large portion of the period of the construction will be perceptible. MTA will implement a rigorous program of special measures to minimize potential impacts to sensitive facilities and structures. Prior to construction, each of the buildings that are extremely susceptible to damage from vibration, including all historic structures, will be physically examined by the contractors under MTA supervision, using both internal and external inspections, and MTA will be working with the City Department of Buildings in that regard. Utility service will be maintained throughout construction, except for planned temporary outages. Outages during the day will be limited to a few hours. If utility work required the complete closure of the roadway and shutting off utility service for several hours, it will occur overnight, and residents and businesses will be notified in advance of any such disruptions. During construction, there is a potential that contaminated soil or groundwater could be uncovered, either in locations where research indicated or in unexpected locations, and we have preventive measures in place to protect the safety of the public and community residents and construction workers while that work is underway. MTA will, in that regard, work with the State Department of Environmental Conservation as appropriate and in accordance with all applicable standards. With respect to the property acquisitions I've discussed earlier, within ninety days from the conclusion of this hearing, the MTA Board will make its determination and findings concerning the proposed property interest I have now described and I've described in detail in this public hearing. MTA will publish a synopsis of the determination and findings, and will provide a copy of the full determination and findings free of charge upon written request. We'll also mail copies of the determination and findings to all affected property owners and to known easement holders, mortgages, and affected tenants. In addition, a copy of the record of this hearing will be available at MTA headquarters for examination without charge. MTA is in the process of making offers of just compensation to each property owner with a compensable interest in the property interest to be acquired. In accordance with prevailing law, however, the termination of rights to occupy vaults and other sidewalk encroachments will not entitle the affected owners to receive compensation. Where offers are made, the offers will represent one hundred percent of MTA's highest-approved appraisal of the property interest. In accordance with the eminent domain procedure law, each property owner will have the option of accepting the offer as payment in full or rejecting the offer and seeking additional sums through negotiation or proceedings under the eminent domain procedure law. Thank you so much for bearing with me during this long presentation. This now concludes my prepared statement, and I'll now turn the hearing over to Douglas Sussman, MTA's Director of Community Affairs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Semenchuk, and thank you all very much for your patience out there. My remarks will be somewhat shorter. I will simply be the moderator, calling the names of people to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes if you can. I will ask you to summarize or conclude after three minutes, and as Mr. Semenchuk said, you can also submit written comments by April thirtieth to supplement any verbal testimony presented tonight. So I will call several names at once, just so you know the sequence of speaking, and you'll be ready to speak upon the conclusion of the previous speaker. Our first speaker is Stephanie Marazzi, to be followed by Judith Han and Robin Pocker and Michael Rykan. Stephanie Marazzi.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Marazzi. I am an associate at Slater &amp; Beckerman. We represent Bettina Equities, the agent for SGRC two forty-one LLC, the owner of two forty-one East eighty-sixth Street. Bettina Equities is also the agent for SGRC two twenty-five LLC, the owner of two twenty-eight East eighty-sixth Street. We are testifying on behalf of Bettina Equities and the two property owners. We object to any proposed acquisition of property interests, termination of rights for sidewalk encroachments, and utility relocation in connection with the Second Avenue Subway project that adversely affects the use and occupancy of the properties, including but not limited to the following adverse effects: obstructing or otherwise interfering with the entrances and exits to retail facilities and residential uses at the properties; obstructing the flow of pedestrian traffic on the sidewalks adjacent to the properties; disrupting utility servicing the properties, such as water, electricity, and gas; and noise, vibration, and other nuisances that might be felt or heard at the properties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Judith Han.
I am Judith Rosman-Han, and my family owns one twenty-four East sixty-third Street. We have owned this property for over fifty years. It has operated as a parking garage, which has always been leased to a professional garage operating company. The garage for one hundred and thirty-four cars has four floors and a basement, which are all used for parking. There is a large elevator to move the cars between the floors, and two large entrances to the garage from sixty-third Street. To permit the operation of the garage, it is essential that at all times the portals to the street be unobstructed and that the car elevator be available. MTA is proposing to locate a ventilation shaft in the garage and to place cooling equipment on the roof. In addition, the MTA would require twenty-four-hour access to the garage and the roof for maintenance and inspection of MTA facilities to be located on the property. The MTA is proposing to take four permanent easements on each of the four levels, which would result in the loss of twenty parking spaces and an additional nine spaces in the basement. MTA also plans to take a temporary easement over the entire property during the construction phase. Any temporary easement to the entire property would restrict the garage operator's use of the two portals at street level, restrict access to parking areas, as well as to prevent the operator from unfettered use of the elevator. Under these circumstances, garage operations would cease entirely, customers would be lost, and even when the temporary easements terminated, it is questionable whether the garage business would recover, particularly after a lengthy construction phase. Finally, MTA is seeking permanent easements to permit access to MTA facilities, which will be in areas acquired by the MTA, and to allow them to inspect and maintain the premises. These easements for access mean that MTA and its contractors would have the right, whenever they desired, to gain access to the premises and the roof, to move parked cars to gain access to these facilities, and to use the portals and the elevator to bring in any equipment needed by MTA in the repair of its equipment or facilities. No garage operator would ever agree to operate a parking facility under these conditions. First, in order to service its customers, the garage operator needs access at all times to the parking areas, portals, and elevator. Any use, obstruction, or encumbrance by the MTA or its contractors of parking areas, portals, or the elevator would render garage operations impossible. Secondly, the garage operator is responsible to its customers for the security of parked cars. Access to parking areas and vehicles by third parties not under the control of the garage operator would be an unacceptable risk to any garage operator. Moreover, it may be difficult or even impossible to obtain insurance under these circumstances. It is neither practical nor acceptable for the MTA to promise to be responsible for its employees and contractors and to offer to provide insurance, since it would be impossible to determine whether any specific damage to a parked vehicle was caused by an employee of the garage operator or an employee of the MTA. Thus, neither MTA indemnification nor insurance is a viable solution. For this reason, no garage operator would be willing to operate the property as a commercial parking garage. The proposed easements for access to MTA facilities on the property and for inspection and maintenance would result in an uneconomical remainder and thus constitute a condemnation of the entire property. To conclude, number one, the permanent easement sought by the MTA to give MTA access to their facilities on the property and to perform inspection and maintenance would result in a permanent and complete end to the garage business and thus constitute a condemnation of the entire property. Two, the proposed permanent easements to be acquired by the MTA would result in the loss of not less than twenty-nine parking spaces, and the economic viability of the entire business would suffer. Number three, the permanent easements on the roof for the cooling equipment are unrelated to the other proposed permanent easements and could be relocated to nearby MTA facilities, and this roof easement would prohibit future development of the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Robin Pocken?
Pocker. Good evening. Having endured more than a decade of horrendous conditions during the original construction of the E sixty-third Street subway station during the nineteen eighties, I received your letter of March twenty-six with distress. Jay Pocker and Son, my family framing business, lost half of its retail space to eminent domain, three-quarters of its windows, and an entrance on Lexington Avenue. The necessity to relocate my manufacturing to an off-site location, not to mention loss of business, the noise, the filth, and invasion of rats due to blasting that went on for several years. The entrance to the stores moved around the corner. There was loss of foot traffic and display window space, which are the lifeblood of a New York retailer. That is incalculable. Now the MTA is proposing to substantially block the remaining sidewalk with a new project outlined in your letter. Another prolonged period of construction could possibly probably put me out of business. I hear you speak about displacement, but there is a loss of ongoing business here. We've been in business for eighty-five years. We're planning a rather large celebration next year, and this kind of construction and disruption would certainly bring down the tone of everything we had planned. Jay Pocker and Son directly employs twenty-five New Yorkers. Our suppliers would then also be forced to lay off dozens more. We must have an assurance of reasonable access and visibility for our customers in order to be able to survive the next years.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Michael Rykan, to be followed by Raymond Levin and Dennis Dietrich.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Rykan. I'm with the law firm Goldstein-Rykan &amp; Rykan. We represent sixty-third, sixty-four Street LP, which is Block thirteen ninety-eight, lots one oh one and one oh two, Royal Condominium, lots thirteen ninety-eight, lot three four five, one twenty-four East sixty-fifth Street, Lot Block thirteen ninety-seven, Lot sixty-one, and three oh one East sixty-ninth Street Parking Garage LLC, Block fourteen forty-one, Lot one. We've also been consulted by Jay Pocker. First, I want to thank Mr. Semenchuk for a very full explanation of the Article II hearing. I also want to thank the MTA for having available people to make explanations an hour before the hearing. We appreciate that. I'm not going to duplicate some of the clients we represent who have individuals who will be speaking. be speaking, but I would like to go back to 124 East 63rd Street, which you heard Judy Hahn on that. That's the garage structure. What distresses me is that we had four meetings with the MTA to try to mitigate the proposed damages that would have resulted from the project as originally envisioned. And after all of those four meetings, what happened is that the project actually got worse. What you're doing is most probably leaving an uneconomic remainder, because there is no way that that garage can continue to function as you plan to take it. In addition, by putting the air conditioning and servicing equipment on the roof, you've effectively saved the MTA a fortune of money, because you would have to provide for that someplace else. Instead, you're electing to use my client's building to house that equipment. And by doing what you're doing, you're leaving it with property that won't be worth what it's worth now. It's on a long-term lease. It's been leased triple-net, and there's no way a garage operator can continue to operate the garage. So I ask that you look at those plans again and see if you can come back to what you had indicated you thought you could do for that project. In addition, you just heard the speaker for Jay Pocker Frames. This is kind of a famous case, which occurred 20 years ago, and the property was severely taken. It was a partial taking, and any failure to provide access to this property will cause its demise. As was stated, the property was there, is about to celebrate 85 years. That's a long time in New York. You walk around the streets and you see signs since 1985, you know, bragging about longevity. 19, 85 years is something that has to be respected. So whatever contracts are given, have to be very careful to make sure that absolute access at all time is allowed for any, anyone entering the store. There are some other speakers who will talk on behalf of the other clients. I thank you for your kind attention and allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Raymond Levin, to be followed by Dennis Dietrich and Kate Carwillis. Mr. Levin.
Good evening. My name is Raymond Levin. I'm with the law firm of Wachtel &amp; Mazur. We represent the owner of 240 East 86th Street and a tenant in waiting at that location. The owner is Ventura in Manhattan Incorporated. I just want to point out, since you indicated that you were going to be sending additional information, the letter that was sent was sent to Robert K. Futterman &amp; Associates. As far as I know, they have no interest in this property, so if you could correct your records. The tenant that is negotiating with the owner is Fairway Markets. I want to thank Andy Semantik, Manon Garg, Helene Sinque, and the project engineers for taking time to meet with us to explain the possible impacts of this project, project construction on 240 East 86th Street. We greatly appreciate the time that you spent. As we understand the plans as they currently exist, the glass canopy at the residential entrance and the con Edison vaults in the sidewalk in front of the building will, in all likelihood, be unaffected by the project. We urge that these proposals be translated into commitments. In addition, the curb area in front of the Fairway Market designated as a commercial loading zone should be both lengthened to 175 feet and its hours extended to seven days a week, 24 hours a day. We understand that this matter, this is a matter for the city's Department of Transportation, but we seek MTA's support in our request. The development of the Fairway Market, which has broad political and community support, is contingent on their availability, on the availability to operate during the construction of the subway. We trust that the productive relationship with the MTA commenced yesterday will continue and that the market and the MTA's needs can be accommodated to the satisfaction of all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Dennis Dietrich.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Dennis Dietrich is my name. I'm the president of the Society of Illustrators. We're a small cultural institution, a museum, located at 128 East 63rd Street. For the record, I'd like to, like to mention that we have submitted a formal letter of protest, which I will not read from tonight. You have that. My concern tonight is the placement of the cooling tower. I really don't know what's going to happen. It's hard to quantify quality of life with, with an installation like this. My, my problem is with the possible effects on our membership. We have an outside space that generates considerable revenue for us. This cooling tower, if it generates a lot of noise, if it causes a lot of vibration, would, would cause us a loss of income from, from a loss of member, member participation. Something else that you mentioned earlier was the pile-based construction. Ours is, I guess what you'd call a vibration-sensitive structure. We're a carriage house that was built in 1875. Your records have it at 1910. Please amend those. We have a collection of artwork worth some $12 million. I'm concerned that the pile drivers that you would use to install the necessary foundation for the cooling towers would have an adverse effect, to say the least, on our structure and the structural integrity of our home. In layman's terms, that's going to leak when you guys are done, and we're going to have a real problem with that. I'm worried that this collection of American illustration will be in jeopardy if this project goes forward, and I'm, I'm really concerned about the future of our small museum if, if this is allowed to continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kate Carwillis, followed by Mark Feraldo, and then James Stromont.
Hi, my name is Kate Carwallis, and I live at 233 East 86th Street. I'm a resident that would be affected by, I guess, 5B. And we agree with the sentiments and echo what's already been said by the representative of the Bettina Properties as far as what some of this will do from, you know, disrupting noise vibrations, impacts, et cetera. But I think one of my biggest concerns, just as a resident, is that one of the things that was mentioned was that 86th Street would be, continue to be a four-lane road. And I don't understand why all of this is being done at the expense of pedestrians to make the sidewalk smaller when during rush hour, you know, the 86th Street sidewalk is already packed. Why wouldn't 86th Street maybe be narrowed to three or two lanes, or whatever it may be, to keep the sidewalks the way that they are? Why is all of this being done at the expense of the pedestrians versus at the expense of traffic? And that's it.
Thank you very much. Mark Feraldo, James Stromont, to be followed by Laura Warfield.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. We spoke earlier with a number of your colleagues between 5:00 and 6:00. They were very understanding, gave a lot of information. I guess as another resident of the 233 East 86th Street, obviously have sympathies the same or empathy with, with what was said earlier for 241 East 86th Street. But what we would ask is that you consider, what we came here to do is to try and find out exactly what the plans were. I think what we've learned is that plans are very fluid. And what we'd asked is that you consider, when you finalize these plans, that you do take into account, which seem to be, you know, the removal of the awnings and the structure of the street and the rest of these things in the particular section of the, of the paper that we have. We would ask that you consider the quality of life on that street, and before you make a decision, that it is absolutely important that you actually take away, you decrease a high-traffic street to a seven-foot sidewalk, and that you take this space, that it really is very necessary. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Laura Warfield, Laurie Goldberg. And following Ms. Goldberg will be Lisa Aparage, and then Elizabeth Donahue. Laura Goldberg, please.
Hi, my name is Laurie Goldberg. I'm an owner at 225 East 86th Street. I chose to buy in a doorman building on a busy street because many times I come home late from work and wanted the security of a doorman looking out for me. From what I had heard before the meeting, the easement would, would occur in front of the building entrance, which would block for construction equipment, which would block the view of the doorman, putting us at risk when we come home late at night. They can't see us coming out of cabs or walking down the street. 86th Street, between 2nd and 3rd, is primarily commercial storefronts. Because of this, the MTA has options on where they, they choose the easement. I urge the MTA to reconsider and move the easement from in front of 225 East 86th Street entrance to one of the many commercial spaces on my block, such as Banana Republic, PC Richards, that are further down, and protecting the safety of the residents of my building and the other residential buildings on the block. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie Aparage, to be followed by Elizabeth Donahue, Phyllis Weisberg, and Denise Meyer.
I'm Elizabeth Donahue.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, please. Elizabeth Donahue.
Good evening. I'm a resident at 116 East 63rd Street, which is directly adjacent to 124. And we have a couple of concerns. One is with respect to the cooling towers going up on 124. We also have an outdoor space, like the Society of Illustrators. Ours is on our roof deck, and we are concerned about the vibration, the noise, and any kind of smoke or steam that could be smelly emanating from the cooling towers themselves. We haven't, we have looked at the environmental impact statement, but it has not been clear as to any kind of vibration or smoke or anything like that. Secondly, in terms of the construction phase, the termination of sidewalk encroachments, we've not heard whether that would be contemplated to be permanent or temporary, only during construction or post-construction as well, and if it's only during construction, for how long that would happen and under what specific circumstances. And finally, there's been very little mention of the quality of life of the street itself. This is a very historic street, and I know that the street underwent a lot of disruption a long time ago with the F train construction. One thing that our street does lack that other parts of 63rd Street does have is extra trees, and I would like if the MTA could contemplate putting in more trees where it is viable, because there are several parts of our street where you don't have sidewalk bands, where I think you could put in an extra tree or two, and that adds a lot to the character of the street overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Weisberg, and then Denise Meyer, and Helene Hartz.
I'm Phyllis Weisberg of the law firm of Kersman, Carrollson, and Frank. At this time, on behalf of my clients at 320 and 340 East 72nd Street and my client at 101 East 63rd Street, I reserve the right to make a written submission by April 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Meyer, Helene Hartz.
Good evening.
And you'll be followed by Michael Kaplan.
My name is Helene Hartig. I'm president of the Board of Directors at 233 East 86th Street, the Park East. We agree with the sentiments expressed by the Ventura, Bettina Equities, and 225 East 86th Street, our neighbors. We also object to any work that interferes with the exits or entrances, that obstructs access to residential or commercial space, including 86th Street photo, that disrupts utilities, that has strong noise vibrations, that impacts upon the security of our residents, which includes many elderly, disabled residents, many families with children who move specifically to a doorman building on East 86th Street. We object to the substantial blocking of the sidewalks and any harm to our roof deck, and we reserve the right to have a written submission by April 30th. Thank you.
Michael Kaplan, then Isaac Sagnar.
Hi, thank you. I'm a resident of 225 East 86th Street and on the Board of the condo. Just again, to echo the statements of the other members, other residents in our building and the buildings nearby, we object to the disruption of access, the noise vibration, and the impact of security. It is a heavily commercial street. There happens to be a couple of residential buildings right next to each other, and that happens to be directly where the MTA is proposing to take away access directly to the street through the sidewalk. Our building does not have a service entrance, so the one entrance way we have to the, to the street will be blocked. There are a lot of other buildings in the street that don't have residential access and also a little bit trouble. We've had a hard time getting information from the MTA about this until tonight. You know, disappointed to hear that there are other buildings that were able to have much more access, and we'd like to be able to, to get that access, to get further information. We do reserve the right to make a more detailed objection in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Isaac Sagnar.
I'm also an owner of a unit at 225 East 86th. I'd like to complain that the MTA provides this information. They don't give any of the residents information of the buildings surrounding ours. So all that they provide is one little highlighted area showing this is what we're going to take, but not understanding how it affects on a grand scale of your entire block. Just like Mr. Kaplan said a moment ago, information wasn't provided in a timely manner. It was only given basically a week before this meeting. And I feel that on 86th Street, such a busy block, there must be other options as opposed to just blocking the only entrance to our building, affecting the value of our building, affecting the safety of the residents of the building. Thank you.
Brian Fakin, F-A-K-O-N, Dana Conroy. And I believe you are the last speaker, unless there is somebody else in the audience who I missed.
I'm Dana Conroy, and I'm a resident of 116 East 63rd Street and just stepped off the Board after being on it for five years, the past couple of years as president. So I'm fairly familiar with this issue. I would like to go on the record publicly as objecting to what I understand is going to be happening on 63rd Street. 63rd Street is a main east-west thoroughfare off the FDR, and what the plan is, is to cut back the sidewalks from whatever they are now, currently nine feet, I think, to five feet, taking down everybody's awning in a residential area, and create a staging, creating a staging area on the west side of the street where trucks will be working. This apparently could be the situation for three solid years. A crane may be there. One lane will be permanently taken away by the staging area, almost directly across from our building. What concerns me is the traffic pattern, primarily coming off 63rd Street. We are going to have all kinds of equipment being put down in the access hole there. This is going to be a nightmare on 63rd Street, having just gone through This is going to be a nightmare on 63rd Street, having just gone through this issue with the Christian Scientists Church on the corner at 63rd and Park. What happened was there were many nights when events were occurring there and traffic is completely down to one lane. This is not really a two-lane street coming off 63rd because one lane is usually taken up during the day by trucks parked there, loading and unloading. And the traffic narrows down to one lane. Typically, the other side, limos sit, on the south side of 63rd Street, limos sit and, you know, as they're waiting for people who are patrons in a nearby restaurant. Having traffic go down to one lane for three years is incredibly insane, in my opinion, and the residents of my building because what's going to happen? All this traffic, Monday through Friday, is coming off of the FDR and it gets backed up in the best of times. But then you throw in construction there. I think it's going to be a serious issue. I would ask you to reassess that. We've got a lot of kids in our building and walking out there, oh, they cut the sidewalk back and so they're going to shift it over and take our sidewalk away and we're going to have cars whizzing by five blocks, five feet from where we walk out the door. I mean, that's just a recipe for serious problems, in my opinion. So I would ask you to reconsider that. I would also ask you to reconsider the cooling towers on the Hahn Garage. It's a residential area. The cooling towers are being put smack in the middle of a residential area when you have Lexington, a commercial area, 200 feet away and plenty of commercial buildings, that it would seem it would be reasonable to request that the cooling towers, rather than impacting all the residents, be moved over to a commercial street. Thank you very much.
This now concludes this portion of the public hearing. As I mentioned at the outset of the hearing, we're going to keep the hearing open through 5:30 PM on April 30th, 2010, for the receipt of additional written statements. So please submit them to me, Anthony Semantik at the MTA Legal Department, 347 Madison Avenue, New York, New York. You can also fax them to me at 212-878-1240. And the contact information, again, is on the public hearing notice. If you didn't pick one up, they're available at the exit. And I just want to say, I want to repeat something that I said earlier. People from the project are here. We were happy to be able to meet with you before the hearing and this is part of an ongoing process. You know, it's our intention to interact, to communicate with you, to provide you information. You know, we understand the impacts on your property, on your neighborhood and, you know, we believe in this project and we want to make it happen and we believe at the end of the day, you know, your neighborhood will be a much better place with the Second Avenue subway. But until we get there, we understand the impacts. And so nobody who wants information will be denied information. You know, we'll provide whatever information we have about the project, can share with you, we'll meet with you. And, you know, nobody will be without access to key people in the project and we make that commitment to you. So we bid you adieu. Thank you so much for bearing with us the long presentation. Good night and safe travels to everybody.